Thank you for coming to order. I want to welcome everybody here. And hopefully, we can get the ballplayers in. Just bring them on in and find some seats. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming in. I'm Mayor Bill Danielson, for those of you who have not been here before. And at this point, I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask for a pledge of allegiance. And I would love the teams to get up and do that for us. Would you, could you do that for us? Lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'll all follow your heads in just one second. Dear Lord, please guide us as we try to make the right decisions up here for the town of Irma, all the constituents, and everyone that works here. Guide us in credit for our first responders, our military, both here and abroad. And thank you so much for the amazing talent that is in this room today that represent Irma so well all over the country in softball and baseball, and continues to do so. Thank you, God, in the name we pray. Okay. First thing, we've got some fun. We're going to do this. And I'd ask the council to look down front, if you would, please. Okay. This is the fun part of being mayor on the council. There's a lot of things that aren't a lot of fun, but there are a lot of things that are fun. It's an exciting time here for Irma. Obviously, I would be under a rock if I didn't say I was watching the end of the 12-year-olds kick some butt tonight and continue the winning way. And I'd like to think Bobby had something to do with it, but he really doesn't. He's just a boss man. We have tremendous athletes here. And it really hit home when I was watching the game against Nevada a couple days ago, or yesterday, whatever day it was, when the Nevada team was from Las Vegas. And the announcers say, Irma, South Carolina, 12,000 people. Nevada, 600, Las Vegas, 647,000 people. What does that say? We could have beat them. So this is the kind of talent we have here. I want to say, I'm going to start with the girls' softball World Series quarterfinalists. I'm going to call your name up. You're going to come on up. We're going to give you a trophy. I think that's what we got, a trophy. And thank you so much for your play and your victories. Now, I will say, this is personal for me, because I went to some of your games. I was there that weekend. I watched you ladies play, and it was unbelievable. I watched my daughter play softball in high school, and it was like watching the cows pick daisies in the field, right? Never took it seriously, but to watch you girls play. Is Ms. Minchu here tonight? Is she here? You are unbelievable. You are unbelievable. Congratulations. All right, we're going to start. Here we go. Number four, E. Adeline, come on down. Not here, okay? We'll get on your dad, why he's not here. He might be on the news. Adeline Broughton, number 32, come on down. No? Rylin Earl, number 14, no? Taylor Gunnell's, number 22. There we go. We won't want you standing up here. We're going to take nice pictures, okay? Don't be shy. Ashlyn Hop, number five, nope, this one's shaking her head, so just give me the okay. Malia Lewis, number three. Ainsley Minchu, come on down. I know you're there. I lost track, but this lady struck out like everybody. I mean, it must have been, how many? I know you know. 25 out of 40, whatever, I don't remember what it was. It was a boatload. Unbelievable. Savannah Paget, number nine, nope. Catherine Shealy, number seven, nope. Harper Sherard, number 24. Laney Stevens, number 19. And Charity West, number 21, come on down. Manager, Brian Jones, come on down. Coach, Sarah Minchu, come on down. Like the kid needs coaching. Coach, Aaron Reimer, are you here? Come on down. These coaches and ladies represented this town like no other, except for the other guys in the crowd, the ones playing, and another team, actually. We have such talent. I will say, it is personal, because I did watch two of your games over the weekend, myself and Mrs. Danielson. We were thrilled to watch you play. We saw when you wrapped up and you were going, they went to Washington, not DC, Washington. And they took it to them outside of Seattle in Kirkland, Washington. You represented us well. Thank you so much and congratulations. Anybody like to say anything? Tell me something I don't already know, please. How many did she strike out? Oh, come on, Ma, I know you know.
I can look.
More than we can count.
We lost count, that's how bad.
Yeah, I lost count at like 38 or something. I don't, I don't, it was a lot. Anything? Anybody got anything?
They played their hearts out, and we just came up a little short, but they played extremely well.
Didn't come up short in our eyes, girl, if you did a great job. Thank you very much. Good to have you all. All right, next up, the 2025 Seniors Baseball World Series U.S. Runner-UP. Now, again, Bobby had nothing to do with this, but these kids are unbelievable. All right, there's not many of you here, which I wish there were more, but I'm going to read everybody's name, because everybody should be recognized. And again, just fell one short, or too short, I guess, if you want to really be technical. Tremendous athletes representing this town and this area. So, first up, Cooper Derrick, number 16. Rory Drier, number 10. Chase Ellis, number nine. Dalton Gravel, number 17. Waylon Bralot, number 49. I get number 49, why are you wearing number 23? I'm so confused. You're just screwing with me, dude. Okay, next up, Brewer Haggard, number 67. All-star jerseys, right? Got it. World Series jerseys, they throw up everything. Good job. You a pitcher?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you told dude, good job. All right, Hanson Hanning, number 27. That's right, just kick the crapper on. It's okay, we're on, okay. Don't block the mayor. You never stand in front of the mayor. I'm the mayor. That way, you'll be out in the parking lot pretty soon. Ah, God, I can't help it, I gotta have fun. All right, Cannon McDonald, number six. Chantel Kane, number 11. Jackson Phipps, number 13. Josh Rector, number one. Will Schultz, number 12. There we go. Will's got messed up in the laundry, I guess. He's got the right number on it. Good job. Congratulations. And Charlie Todd, number 32. Manager, Casey Phipps. Coach, Pat Gravel. He isn't?
He's coaching the 12U team, too.
Coach, Eric Drier, how about Eric? Are you here? Well, again, what can you say about the talent of these guys and their teammates, and the coaches, and the depth of everything that we bring to the table? Want to congratulate you all on a great showing. Coach, do you have anything you want to tell us?
Yeah, I will say that this doesn't happen in a vacuum. Irma Little League is just a tremendous asset to our community, if you guys aren't familiar with it or had kids that play there. The amount of volunteer hours that go into putting together leagues and teams for these young people is just amazing, between the volunteers that prep the fields, that umpire games, that order uniforms, that run the concession stand. We have, Bobby can correct me, we have, what, 800 kids roughly playing in Irma Little League this spring in all of our age groups. We're one of the fastest-growing little leagues in the country. And we had four different teams go to a World Series this year. We believe that is a first ever in the history of little leagues. Anyway, I want to thank all the people that helped Irma Little League put this together, from Bobby and the board on down to everybody that drags a rake, flips burgers, and everything else. And this community has a tremendous asset there.
Thank you. Thank you. Bobby, I kid you, but would you like to come down and say something as president of this organization? Introduce yourself and...
Bobby Jensen, I've been out at Irma Little League for about 14 years, on the board for about 11, president for one. And it's everything that Casey says. I mean, the importance of, in my mind, there's great things you gotta have to be successful. One, it shows for the community. If the community doesn't buy into it, don't have anything, go to the volunteers, and I thought it goes with this. So, I mean, we have that here, and as the mayor said, it's coming from like 12,000. It's a little bit big, we have Richland County, zip codes. But when you have that, it allows you to create a space that kids can come have fun. If you haven't been there, I was actually with Richland County trying to get part money. But there's stuff going on out there, but I was telling her, we have cameras that you can watch all the games from field one through four. So you don't have to be there to watch, kids, if you're traveling and all of that. I really want to get them on field five and six, too. Because after you see the first round of games at 6 o'clock, the Wolfball games that go along up down fields five and six is tremendous. You'll have 30 kids from 2 to 16 out there playing Wolfball, having fun. That's what it creates, so they're not getting in trouble, they're playing a game of baseball. And the funny thing is, a lot of times, it's not the kids always wanting to go there. Moms and dads want to go there every night, because their buddies are there, too. So you get great food, great friendship, lot of fun, and that's what we create. So it's a pleasure to have, you know, Mayor Bill out here, letting us come up here and get recognized for great accomplishments, absolutely. But thank you to everyone that has any part into it. And if you don't have it yet, you're inspired to have it, I'll give you my phone number. 24 hours a day, I'll take that phone call. That's all of what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Congratulations. Okay. We're going to go to the next item.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back up. For those of you who don't, I know you're all aware, we have another team to honor that couldn't be here tonight, but they'll be here next month. And that is the intermediate baseball squad. They won U.S. third place in the World Series. And of course, the boys who are playing right now as we speak, well, hopefully, they're eating dinner right now, but great victory today on their behalf. So couldn't be more excited to watch these kids play ball. Okay, next up, approval of the agenda. We hear a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Reading of the minutes for July 15, 2025, council meeting. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of the July 15, 2025 council meeting with the change of the date in the first paragraph to read July 15, 2025.
So moves.
Is there a second? You already said a motion.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let's have it. All right, report of standing. Ken?
Mayor members of council. Please welcome a new employee, Elaine Webb. She started yesterday. We welcome her as our new accounts payable specialist to help Lisa out. I know Lisa's excited, we're all excited to have her. She's welcomed to our department. Received eight tax applications last week. The committee will meet on September 4th, and then make the recommendations to council on the 16th. Doug has finalized the fee for recent investments for Elaine. She should receive approximately $60,000 soon as the feds release that money. And ordinances we're working on to present at the September work session are the property management, property management ordinance, procurement policy ordinance, and economic development ordinance. So she'd have a September work meeting. That's all I have.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Councilor Cullen, will you give us the new in-town businesses?
Sure. We have Blue Lantern Enterprises LLC located at 147 Billsdale Road. Supreme Produce located at 7467 St. Andrews Road, which is inside the Kroger. We have Yummy Sushi, also located at 7467 St. Andrews Road inside the Kroger. And Mate Development Corporation at 1085 Lake Murray Boulevard. That's one more. Oh, I see it. I.K. Granite LLC at 1140 Mosley Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, consideration of communications. Let's all go down front again, please. As you're all aware, every month, we get to give away and honor a small business of the month. And this month, it is, I'm just going to read it to you so you can hear it all out, presented to Tide Law Firm in recognition of being the small business of the month for the town of Irma, August 2025. Jason Brandon, come on down. Speech, please.
All right. I mean, you're there already?
No, speak right here.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for this great honor. It's been a great scheduling, kind of serendipitous that I was able to be here. Normally, we have Richland County Council meetings where I also serve on Tuesdays, but our August schedule's a little different. So thrilled to be here with you all today. Tide Law Firm is a real estate transactions law firm, and one of the things that we get to do is oftentimes be one of the first points of contact and encounter for people that are new to the area. And it's a great blessing, frankly, to do business in a community that we can be proud of so very easily, because we have so many great assets. The people, you know, great restaurants, retail, the lake, great Little League baseball and softball. And so it's really nice to be able to be supportive of the community, to give back to the community that has started to support us. I have been practicing law for many years and had the opportunity to join up with my first cousin and open this law firm here in the Irma area just a couple of years ago. And it's been a great experience, and we thank you for welcoming us, and we're so thrilled to be a part of the Irma community. Thanks.
All right, let's stick around for just one more minute. Couple other plaque to give out tonight, which is kind of special. This is awarded for the generous sponsorship of the Fourth of July Laser Light Show at Moore Park on July 4, 2025. Your commitment helped illuminate our skies and bring our community together for a spectacular celebration. Thank you for your continued support of Irma, the Tide Law Firm. Jason Brandon, come on down. I just wanted to make you more than just...
Thanks.
We're going to do a picture with this, too.
Thank you, man.
Mr. Mayor, you're probably right. The first time when you said every year you get to give away, you get to give away a business.
Give away, giving it away.
Don't give us away just yet.
No, we won't. We won't. You keep practicing, you'll get it done sooner or later. Maybe you and Will can both work together. Go ahead, Councilor Almond, please.
Thank you. Tonight for our school showcase, we're going to have the District Five Foundation for Educational Excellence make a presentation. Dr. Matt Boyson will be presenting.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Barb, for inviting us, the rest of the council. I appreciate you letting us speak. The District Five Foundation, I am proud to be the co-chairman of the board. We have four pillars that we focus on in the foundation. Number one is snack acts. Everybody should be available, be able to have quality food inside and outside of school. Over the last five years, we were able to raise over $139,000, and that helped to supply 6,000 meals to kids within our district. Another pillar of the District Five Foundation is student grants. Students around the district apply for these grants. It's part of their curriculum that they write a grant, receive the money, and then complete a project. Over the last five years, we've raised over $137,000 to help these kids to pursue their career goals and to help fund their, you know, school projects. Also, we do teacher grants, so in a similar vein, teachers are allowed to submit grants for school supplies or any other things that they may need for their classroom. So we're really proud to be able to help the students of the community, teachers within the community, and we love being part of District Five. The last one is district unity. The District Five Foundation was originally formed to develop unity amongst the three areas of the school. As you guys know, District Five covers a large area of Irma, Chaykin, and Dutchport. So to help to bridge the gap between those different areas, the District Five Foundation has made it a goal to have fun events that bring unity amongst the school district. A lot of the teams, I'm sure those guys over there know, once you get to high school, it's Irma versus Dutchport versus Chaykin, which is great. We love the competitive spirit. But the District Five Foundation is all about unity and building the bridge between all of those different areas. So this past year, we had Spring Fest, the first of its kind, where we had 16 different teams from local high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, local businesses, and some, actually, two teams that had the police. So Richland County Sheriff's Department were our champions. So they were able to test their mettle. We even had Dr. Ross out there. We even had Dr. Ross out there running the mazes. So it was a really fun time. Next year will be in March, so keep an eye out for that. How you can help, we love help, we love getting the community involved with our events. We love donations. One hundred percent of all donations go directly to kids within the school district. It's the best way you can be a part of the community, help to build and grow, and help Ermo become the best town they can be in. So thank you to the council, thank you to Barb specifically for inviting us. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, we'll be here. I've got some of my board members here with me. We've got some flyers and different handouts. If you're interested in learning more or being part of the District Five Foundation, we would love to meet with you, talk with you, and see how we can partner moving forward. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate the time and how well you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Boyson. Dr. Waldman, community connections.
Thank you. First up is the South Carolina Career Kids Career Clubs. Registration is now open for career clubs, and these clubs will be held at Ermo Elementary, Seven Oaks Park, Nursery Road Elementary, and Oak Point Elementary. You can register through the ICRC website or scan this QR code that's showing on this On Saturday, September sixth, from ten AM to two PM, there'll be a community blood drive with the Blood Connection. This will be held at McGregor Presbyterian Church. They ask that you schedule an appointment, and the website for scheduling the appointment is shown on this slide. I would say it, but it's very long. This is an opportunity to support our community with the blood drive. Mary's Mobile Market will start up their artisan markets at Moore Park beginning in September. As you can see on this slide, there's dates in September, October, November, and December for the artisan market at Moore Park. This first one on Sunday, September seventh, from noon until four PM, is their first Stamp and Stroll event. There'll be live music, food, artisan, and treats from local businesses. The Ermo Chaykin Recreation Commission, the Crooked Creek Park, is holding an outdoor movie night on Friday, September twelfth, from six-thirty to nine-thirty PM. Admission is free, and this is being sponsored by Seacoast Church. And don't forget, we have the Ermo Okra Struck coming up pretty soon. It'll be September twenty-sixth from six PM to eleven PM, and September twenty-seventh from nine AM to five PM. There'll be parade, amusements, entertainment, food, vendors, exhibitors, and more. On Friday night, the main stage starts at seven PM. The Root Doctors and Cowboy Mouth will be appearing. It's free admission, and you can get more information by scanning the QR code on this The Artisan Market, Art Under the Oaks, has their schedule out for their various mini-markets and Saturday markets. The mini-markets are on Fridays, and there are various dates, September through November. And then the Saturday markets are also September, October, and November. There'll be vendors, clothing, local artists, crafts, food. And again, if you're interested in being a vendor, you can scan the QR code on this slide. This is being presented by Artistic Aspirations. The Ermo Town Limits Concert Series is going to present Motown Night at the Amphitheater on October twenty-fourth, so mark that date on your calendar. Gates will open at five-thirty PM and concert starts at seven. This is the concert that got rained out or stormed out last spring, so it's going to take place on October twenty-fourth. And also, just to remind you to mark your calendar, that Friday, October thirty-first in Moore Park, there'll be the Trunk or Tree Event. This is being sponsored by the Ermo Events Committee, and you can get more information by scanning the QR code on this slide. And finally, with all the rain we've been having lately, I just wanted to remind everyone to steer clear of flooded roads. Even though we don't have any major rivers running through Ermo, you know, it's not unusual for a heavy downpour to end up flooding a road, and it doesn't take much for a car to go out of control. Just six inches of water is enough for you to lose your ability to control your vehicle. So just be careful, be safe, and turn around, don't drown. That concludes.
You're going to conclude on turn around, don't drown.
Yeah.
Okay, I get it. I get it. I'll tell you a story about that when I was about twelve. Remind me later. Thank you, counselor. Good job. So next up is presentation of citizens. This is for agenda items only. The three-minute limit, I'm not going to read all that to you. We ask that you be respectful. It is not a dialogue. It's not a conversation. It is for you to make a presentation. So I don't have anybody signed up, but if there's someone who would like to address us, please raise your hand, and I'll call you forward. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have none, so we're going to move from unfinished business to new business. First item up is item A, first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash eleven to annex three properties totaling approximately eighteen point nine-two acres into the town of Ermo, including thirty-five thirty-two Drea Shoals Road, TMS R zero-three-three zero-three dash zero-three dash zero-three, R zero-three-three zero-three dash zero-three dash zero-four, and R zero-three-three zero-two dash zero-one dash one-one, and to rezone said properties from HM Homestead, which is Richland County, and RT Residential Transition with Richland County to CG General Commercial, Town of Ermo. This would annex the vacant property southeast of the Walgreens at the corner of Drea Shoals Road and Dutch Fork Road into the town limits. Do I hear a motion? Moved.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned and second, I will turn to council members for comments.
So in doing the research, I have come to the conclusion myself that this is part of our comprehensive land plan, part of the area that we do want to annex. My only concern is the annexation and the rezoning at the same time. So I'm in favor of seeing this through tonight so that we can put it on a council workshop for September, if we can make sure we get that, put on that council workshop so we could discuss the zoning component, and so that I can better understand what all goes into that and why that would be moving to GC versus other zones.
Doug, can you clarify for some of us on the rationale of taking something into town without knowing what's going to be on it?
I think first, the applicant does not have a use for that property in mind. That's something we've discussed. They would like to bring it into town so that they can enjoy town services for any future use on that. But at this point, they want to be able to market it as something that's in town, that will have town police, town fire, and town staff support. But in terms of like what's going to be on it, what I would say is there are dozens of acres, you know, maybe a hundred acres in town that are vacant, that we have no idea what's going to go on it. And that's why we have zoning. And the zoning code, I hope, does a good job of controlling what is allowed on that property, but also what that looks like in terms of the architecture and the landscaping. And so whether it's a hotel, an office, a car dealership, I mean, who knows what it could be, but it would be something that should be attractive and something that we as a town can be proud of.
Mr. Mayor, similar to Councilman Ward, I did have an immediate reaction to seeing it being rezoned as we were asked to vote on it. The second thing is, we haven't discussed it. I'm opposed to your approach, Councilman Ward, which is we shouldn't vote on it until we talk about it, because there's always time to vote it in. To go in blind, to me, and then discuss it, not feeling that so much. So that's my thought, is let's go ahead and talk about it in our next workshop, and we can always bring it up again in our next meeting as far as voting on the annexation. But I would prefer to make a decision after I'm informed, not the other way around.
Just for clarification, the request for annexation came from the property owner?
That is correct.
So we didn't ask them to annex in. They want to come into the town.
That's correct. That's pretty much how annexation works in South Carolina. You can't force anyone to come in, but the property owner met with us, and they presented the petition to ask to come in.
So they applied for annexation, and then it went to the planning commission?
That's correct. And they're the ones who requested the zoning of general commercial. Yes.
And it's my understanding that when we annex property in, we need to have some kind of zoning on that property. Otherwise, it's just, it just, we end up with a second step.
Yeah, actually.
Can't annex property without zoning.
It needs to have some kind of zoning.
That's correct. And actually ironically, last night, we had planning training here in this room with our MASC field services coordinator, Charlie Barino, and we talked about annexation in that training. And one of the things he said was it's very important to make sure that annexation and zoning go hand in hand. Some places do put the rezoning like a month behind. I think years ago, we did do that here in Ermo. I think what that, what that does is, A, it creates a piece of land with no zoning, which is not really the way I believe you're supposed to do it. But also, it puts in a position where the property comes into town, but then council has the opportunity to pick, you know, frankly, whatever zone they want. And at that point, it's already in town. The landowner has absolutely no say. And as a property rights person, that just feels wrong. I think, you know, they've requested general commercial. If council's job to either bring them in or not, zone them as you wish. But, you know, if you wanted a zone that was not amenable to the owner, the owner could maybe say, hey, I don't want fringe agricultural, can I pull it back? But if you were to bring it in and then rezone later, that would be, that would be impossible for them. Once it's in town, it's in town.
And general commercial fits with our comprehensive plan in that vicinity?
It does. Yes, the comprehensive plan shows that as being neighborhood center, which as it says, is generally located near concentrations of existing or planned neighborhoods along key roadways and at major intersections, featuring small-scale commercial, less than twenty-five thousand square feet per use. They may also have limited residential use. I think in that area, being adjacent to Walgreens, being across the street from strip centers, you're also right around the corner from a single-family detached development. You're basically across the street from a apartment complex. And so based on my knowledge and experience of planning, really any zone would be a good use there, other than what it's currently zoned. It's currently zoned for about one unit per acre or one unit per fifty thousand square feet. That's the zone in the county. From a smart growth or, you know, proper planning, zoning should probably be somewhat similar to what it's near. And what it's near is commercial, residential, and even high-density residential. And so commercial is a, it fits our feature land use. It also fits the nearby zoning. But the current zoning of one unit per acre really does not a good fit with what's in that immediate area, in my opinion.
Thank you.
If we don't vote to pass this, how long do they have to wait before they can resubmit?
If they had a substantially different plan, they could come back. So I guess if they had like a PD, or if they said, hey, we want to sell it to X developer, and this is their plan, it could come back sooner. But otherwise, it takes a year for them to come back if you were to simply vote no.
So here's, here's what I'm hearing up here, and you correct me if I'm wrong. Not bringing this into the town basically voids our hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar, one-year comprehensive land plan. Is that correct?
It would not match the future land use map that was generated by that plan. That's correct.
Might as well just take this and throw it in the trash. It's a question.
Sure.
Okay. Second is you cannot, and I've checked with MASC, you cannot and should not annex a property in without a zoning. Now, that may have happened years ago, but you can't do it here.
That is correct. That's proper practice.
Yeah. I mean, you're, you're our expert, and I'm not going to go against what our expert says. That's why you're the planner. Third, and you mentioned it, well, there's four items. The third, you mentioned it, it's surrounding properties. It's only eighteen acres. With a commercial zoning, it will eliminate any residential properties, right? Thus minimizing the density issue that seems to be everybody's concern. All right? You could jam one-hundred-and-fifty townhomes in there if we zone, if it was zoned some other residential property or type. So, and the fourth item is, I've said it a million times, and I'll continue to say it a million times, I am the not, I am not one that's going to deny someone and their family from realizing the gains of selling a piece of property in this community and tell them, no, they can't. And they have to settle for a third of the value, or whatever it might be, because in this case, nobody's going to buy it. All right? They're not going to put fifteen houses on an eighteen-acre parcel. I don't think anyone sitting up here would want to be in that position. I think the one way we can handle this is by bringing it into the town, and we can control what happens to it from being into the town. We have put our own architectural review standards in with commercial buildings. We've got rules now that limit what you can build, how you can build it, what it's going to look like, all those things. So that's where I think we are on this thing, and it fits into the comprehensive plan. That's the bottom line. So with that, I'm going to call for the roll.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
No.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Item B, first reading of ordinance twenty-five-twelve to amend chapter twenty-two of the Ermo Municipal Ordinance, offenses and miscellaneous provisions to add section twenty-two-seventy-two hate intimidation. This is brought to us by Counselor Phyllis Coleman. This will make hate intimidation illegal in the town of Ermo. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to speak at length about this ordinance because it's very important to me. I'm going to give you the overarching reasons why I brought this forward. One was, you know, looking at the news one day, and I saw where Richland County had passed a similar ordinance, and I thought, well, only half of our town is covered by that kind of protection, and we really should offer it to the entire town. So that was the first thought that came to my mind. Second of all, it's a message that our town, Ermo, chooses to lean toward the best of humanity, which is to protect any and all persons in our town limits from, from that kind of behavior. I mean, it's just unacceptable. Three, no child should grow up in a culture that remotely condones hate and intimidation as any kind of behavior, because then they become the generation where its practice has common behavior. And fourth, and this is the most important to me, is I've had a personal, and as well as my church community for sure, impact from a hate crime, because when Reverend Clemente Pinckney was killed, he was my minister right down the street at Young he was my minister right down the street at Young's Chapel. And my mother and I had just seen him and his daughter up in Ermo at a restaurant two months before he was killed. I mean, that just shook me to my core. Because I know the Reverend, on the day that it happened, welcomed the young man into the church meeting. And so, where I personally can help prevent that or send a message that that should not ever occur, that is the reason that I have put this forward. Because I want, I don't want Ermo to even remotely be seen as a place where that's okay. Thank you.
Very well said. Second? Comments? Pretty much said it all, right? Okay, with that, Lisa, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Item C, Acceptance of a Bond for the Dutch Fork Road Chipotle. This is brought by the staff. This will authorize the town to hold a performance bond for the Chipotle to be located adjacent to 1079 Dutch Fork Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, we will move to discuss, and I would like to throw this directly to Doug, if you would, please.
Sure. So, I've been working with Chipotle for the last six or so months on their plan to go to their location, which is directly left of the YMCA if you're coming out of the Walmart. And so, working with our new traffic impact analysis plan, they engaged with our engineer, Bowman, to work on the traffic plan for this. And what it came out to is they have two entrances. One goes north to Dutch Fork Road, one goes south to Salem Church. And the one that is on the north side is slated to be a full-service intersection, so you can go in or out, left or right. And that makes perfect sense right now. But as that road is widened, there will be a realignment of the Salem Church Road to go right into the entrance of the Lex Rich 5 main office. And that's going to bring the road from the Ermo Implement Store further to the east, bring it closer to Chipotle. When that road gets realigned, DOT wants to see the northern entrance to Dutch Fork be turned into a right-in, right-out. And you will no longer be able to take a left into Chipotle or out of Chipotle. Instead, if you want to, if you're driving north, northwest, you'd have to go down Salem Church and then come in from the back right. And so, when that road gets realigned, DOT is requesting Chipotle to put in a concrete median on their entrance in order to facilitate the right-in, right-out. And that is slated to cost somewhere around $7,000. That's what the developer, the surprise developer came up with. I ran that by our engineer, and he confirmed that is a fair price. So, in cases like this, we do what's called a development bond or a performance bond, where the developer pays us money to ensure that that work is done. The Chipotle, or the owners of that Chipotle, have agreed that they will do the work at such time as that road is realigned. We just don't know when that's going to be. It might be two years, it might be five years, it might be, you know, who knows? We know how roadwork works around here. And so, the bond is just to ensure that that work is done or is done correctly. And so, let's just say three years from now, that road is realigned, Chipotle needs to put in that intersection, they should, they will do it. In a perfect world, they will do it, and then we will refund the bond amount to Chipotle for their work. If for some reason that work is not done, or is not done correctly, then we have about $10,000 to ensure that work is done correctly. And the, like I said, the quote amount is around $7,200, something like that. But in cases of performance bonds, we ask for an extra additional 25% to kind of cover inflation or just, you know, the estimate being off. And so, in the opinion of our engineer, that is the correct amount to cover this. It's a pretty small job, all things being equal.
Okay. Seems simple straight, right? Seems pretty simple. The bottom line, it's a payment performance bond. We hold it, put the money up front. Now, I will say, this town has had an issue with payment performance bonds in the past. The one that comes to mind is Cornerstone Subdivision. And I believe since, we're all new since that happened. I believe it was road improvements, and it cost the town, I think, anybody correct me on this, $250,000, something like that? It was a big chunk of money. So, because the bond was released prematurely, I believe. This case, it's no big deal. That case, and I might be off a little bit on that. I'd be happy to be corrected. But I've worked in the world of payment performance bonds my entire life. So, when I saw it was only 10 grand, I got a little nervous, but that's nothing. But the reality is so that we know what we're talking about, right-in, right-out, is an example, right in front of Tavernon 6, they have two of those, right-in, right-out, right? And that's really the island that would have to be built. So, that's my spiel. Counselor?
Just for clarification, Doug, this would have to be done at both the Dutch Fork Road entrance as well as the Salem Church Road?
No, no, just Dutch Fork. They will continue to have a full-service intersection on the rear.
Because looking, well, looking at the diagram, and I don't know which, this is on page 30.
Mm-hmm.
It just looks like the way that they're going to reroute Salem Church Road, it may impact the initial entrance on Salem Church Road a little bit.
It will impact it, but the road is being designed to accept that impact. And so, there is no right-in, right-out envisioned for that. But I did want to point out that the road onto Dutch Fork is designed now to accept that right-in, right-out in the future. So, they have redesigned that mouth to hold it. So, when they do this, the reason it's only a $10,000 project is because all they have to do, all they have to do, is put in that triangular median. But they don't have to widen the mouth at all to accept the incoming traffic.
So, it's just that one intersection that has to be modified?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Doug, I've had, I don't know how many comments about why I can't, Salem Church come through and match the intersection. It's safer to have all that traffic in across the four. Has there been a conversation about that up until now you're aware of?
There have been numerous conversations about that. I believe, right now, that is the plan. And so, when, the, on the other side of the YMCA, on the right side, if you're coming out of Walmart, they're currently building a Prisma Healthcare Urgent Care. And if you look, there is a pretty wide area between the YMCA and the urgent care. We've been talking with DOT. I think everybody wants to see that happen, including DOT. I don't believe it's been funded, but we ensured that the urgent care was placed far enough away from the Y that that road could be done. And so, I've, in a perfect world, you will be able to drive straight through to the Walmart entrance, but you could also take a right and you would come, you know, up to the Lex Rich 5 entrance in Chipotle. So, no guarantees in the road world, but we're very hopeful that will happen.
Well, I'm asking because from what it looks like, you can cut through there.
Well, you, I guess, sure. But, but you're, I mean, you're, I mean, right now, today, yes. Because you'd be able to go through, go around the building, come back up, and then you're kind, you know, you're not much better off than you are going all the way around to the intersection there. Because yes, it's a tighter turn, but you're still trying to take a left presumably onto Dutch Fork, which is not the safest situation. So, yes, I suppose you could, but it would be just as easy to, you know, to go to where it currently terminates. Thank you.
Yeah. The other thing too, Councilman, to help you with that, when I was first elected to council, this was a hot item. And it's really kind of always been a hot item. It's just not talked about as much as it was four or five years ago. And it was very important to Councilman Kelly Bush, who was pushing to make this happen. And I'm looking over there, Witt's nodding because he's kind of like the senior guy around here now. And, you know, the number that got thrown out then was $4 to $5 million to bring that extension straight through. So, it's always been a priority, and it's never had funding. So, because we said, we'll do it, right? The town kind of went, ah, yeah, we can do this, right? Meh, no, not for $4 or $5 million, we're not going to do it. So, it's a priority, and who knows when it's going to happen? So, we do what we can here to protect the infrastructure the best we can until things happen there. Okay, anything else? Any other comments? All right. Well, with that, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Appointment of Accommodations Tax Committee. It's brought to me, brought to us by the staff. This is one vacancy on the Accommodations Tax Committee. The term will expire June 30th, 2028. An application was received from Olinda Booker. Sorry, Olinda, if you're here, I'm trying to speak too fast there. Olinda Booker. Again, this is the Accommodations Tax Committee. There's a lot of rules as to who can be on this committee. And I'm assuming, Jim, that Olinda qualifies. I have read her, her application. Any comments? Should we just go ahead and approve her? All right? Would you call the roll on approval for her? I'm sorry, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, if you would, go ahead and call the roll, please. Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Excuse me, I made that motion in my head, by the way. Appointment, Item E, Appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Brought to us by the staff. There are two vacancies on the BZA. With one term ending March 2028 and one ending March 2029. An application has been received by Eric, I guess Ho, H-O-H? Okay, Eric, good to see you. Thank you. I'm glad I didn't mess that up. Okay, again, we have one, we have another vacancy. And we move forward with this vacancy. We've read his, his application. Any comments from anybody? Is there a motion?
I would like to move that we appoint Eric Ho to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending in March 2029.
Second.
Any other comments? Well, I'm glad you picked the date because that was my next question, so. Being thorough, you threw me off, being thorough. Okay, all right. No other discussions? Lisa, will you call the roll?
Discussion. Yeah, I just want to thank you, Eric, for stepping up to serve the town. There's certainly plenty of opportunities. The harvest is great, but the workers are few, so thank you very much.
Okay, Lisa, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. We appreciate your participation and wish you good luck in this endeavor. I just want to clarify, make sure that staff and Lisa are clear that we still have the opening for the 2028 year ending. Okay, next item up is Item 12, Presentation by Citizens. No one's signed up. Again, I'll repeat. We'll get to you. We're going to, we're going to have three minutes. We're going to be civil, where it's not a conversation, it's, it is basically a presentation. So, with that, we, again, don't have anybody signed up. But Mr. Martin, you'd like to speak? Come on, come on ahead.
Henry Martin, I think most of you know me from Ballantyne. And again, I thank you guys for your service. I have two things. One, I sent in the notice about your, the property at Walgreens. And I guess I learned a little bit more about what you're planning to do there. But I would remind you two things. One is, Richland County didn't want to change it. So, just bringing it into the town doesn't mean that it's appropriate. You're giving these people outs when we have other institutions that cover you entirely that should be included in that conversation. Number two, it doesn't have the infrastructure to handle the in-and-outs. So, right-ins and right-outs, like we're doing on the other road, are, they're problematic on a road that's not wide enough to handle most of the traffic most of the time. So, again, I ask that somehow the Planning Commission, the town, and people be cognizant of the, the issues we have in Ballantyne. The railroad tracks when they close, they put the light up at Bickley. It's not designed properly, they know it, that's all the money they had, and I got that. Tomorrow, I will go to the Ad hoc Committee with the House Representatives to talk to them about their discussions on improving the DOT or changing it. Because we got to find some different ways to do things. The old way is not working for this area. And I can only speak for this area, but I'm sure the whole state has that. So, I just bring that up again to ask for your consideration for Ermo because, you know, you are creating, it has been for 20 years when I sent you the notice that happened on Waterwalk, where it said, we're doing this thing that Ermo, Richland says not to do, but we're doing it anyway. You've been doing it a long time. And it's not accepted well by the citizens that are outside of that. So, as you move forward with your vision 2035 into Ballantyne, you're going to meet a lot of resistance. That's all I'm telling you. You're not doing any, yourself any favors by where we're at until we get this infrastructure taken care of, of 76 and the other. And you can say it's in somebody else's hands, but you're contributing to part of that. The last thing I'd like to say is, on this subject of Chipotle, I certainly didn't know about that, and I'm not real clear about that. So, I'm going to ask that I would get a, can I get a copy, Doug, by request to see where that's going in? Because I'm pretty impactful on that road. And when we asked Ermo about the Aldi's, when a previous council person was here, I was told that, we said, why don't we come in and go across the road straight into Walmart? And that was not possible because I was told Prisma, nobody wanted to lot that land out to do that. So, now, we have the road coming behind the Ermo outdoor equipment that Richland County is going to provide as the solution to close off Salem Church Road. And now, I'm hearing something that looks totally different. So, I'm really kind of confused as to what's going on there. So, I would like to look at that. And the last thing I did, I went by and saw the sign on the, on the property over there, and it's laying in the weeds. There's no way possible you can see that sign. You got a for sale sign up that side. If you're going to want to put out zoning, and Richland County has that same problem, we need to be able to put more details out that people can see the sign. You know, nobody's going to pull over in the weeds on that road and shoot it. So, we got to be a lot smarter if you want to actually put out stuff that public can recognize and participate in, make it so that you can see it and you can access it, Doug, because you also know we didn't get the notice in the, in the mail too as well. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your service again.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anyone else? Come on, come on up, Ms. Coleman. Before you start, can I open this now, or is this?
You can, you can, you can, yeah. It's yours now, got your name on it. But anyway, good evening, everyone. My name is Lawrence Coleman. I stay at 13 East Slaton Court, Ermo, South Carolina. What I'm talking about this evening is the African-American Historical Society of Ermo and the South Carolina African-American Heritage Commission is quarterly inviting the town. We're going to send out a letter to Danielle digitally, too. I gave her a hard copy. But it's a historical marker dedication for the Honorable Judge Harold Bowe, a civil rights leader that was with the Thurgood Marshall and them dealing with the Briggs versus Elliott case in Clarendon County back in the 1940s. We'll be putting up a historical marker at his home on 101 Lake Murray Boulevard. Due to the space at 101 Lake Murray Boulevard, there is another letter that will go out with a different address for parking. Some individuals will park at that, that site, and some, the majority of the individuals will not park at that site. They will park- They will park at another location, a parking lot. We already have it designated, been approved, and we're going to have transportation for those individuals to bring them to the historical site for the dedication. The transportation will start at 9:00 a.m. The ceremony will start at 10:00. The reason we say that is because it's less than a quarter of a mile from that parking lot to the site. However, we want people to kind of be there on time, to see everything. It should last an hour, it probably won't, but we got an hour slotted for that, okay? And we're going to have a reception for them also at Harbison, that's where he went to school, from 12:00 to 1:30. So everybody's invited to come out to that and see that historical moment for that civil rights icon that got that stuff started. And that's all I have. Mayor, I gave the council your, your invite. So like I said again, I will repeat that part. At 101 Lake Murray Boulevard, that's where the dedication will be, and that's where the marker will be. The other address, which is 131 Lake Murray Boulevard, that's for individuals to come, and they'll park and be transported from that area to the site. Okay? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Just so you know, I'm not being rude, I'm putting that in my phone. On my calendar, thank you. Who's up next? Anyone else have any presentation to make to the council? Hearing none, seeing none? We will move to discussion. Nothing on the discussion that I'm aware of. Jim, do you have anything? You're good? Okay. Executive session would be next up, and we have nothing there. Town Council may act on items discussed in the executive session after returning from the executive session. Well, we're not having an executive session, so I would have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.